Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Xander, here. This needs Dr. Beasley.
Here, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Here, present.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Matthews.
Present.
Forum.
Forum is in reach. Thank you. We will now turn it all to Dr. Green and Dr. Amen for their presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, again, to board members and those who might be joining us online for this workshop on financial resources and allocations. Again, as we focus, our district priorities really around resources and operations. Tonight's discussion will kind of just be centered around some general budgetary processes, but also I think an activity to work with the board as we'd love to have transparency, equitable budgeting across the district, and really looking at the various programs. I think being the, again, I keep saying we're the largest, but geographically the most diverse school district and having the most diverse programming. I think it'd be interesting to go through to see how we look at resource allocation, how we align it to our priorities. And again, this is just be an opportunity for the board to engage in that process. Interesting enough, and I'll just share, I know we've had discussions and topics around Title I. As you know, we have a large group of private schools in our geographic boundaries who access our title funding through the federal programs, right? And so those are schools like Tower Hill, Sally's, Tatna, for example, you know, get access to resources to our Title II and Title IV funding. So generally speaking, people don't always see that or hear that. So not only are we looking at how we support our schools, but as a district, how we holistically support the broader red clay community. And so there's a lot of nuances to what we do around budgeting. Budgeting tends to be fixed. You know, we're coming off a historic referendum. So this is an opportunity, I think, to engage the board as we start to look at priorities, how we support and provide resources to the district as a whole. So I will let, I know Ms. Stevens is having just some technical difficulties with board docs. So once she gets signed on, I'll turn it over to Dr.
Having issues myself.
And I can.
It's a perfect time to keep the elevator.
Or to Jeopardy Music.
Okay, sorry for some of that delay there. Girl, you did a good job of stalling while we got it ready. Then, Ray, you're gonna bring up that to share the screen.
I can't share it. I need, I need, I need to move the screen to this other one, and I can't.
Oh, from the iPad?
Yes.
Oh, we're working on that. As all of you know, that are board members in Delaware, in order to be a board member, you need to take a financial workshop training. You've all taken that either recently or sometime, in some cases, it might have been a couple of years ago. So the thought is that that's really the first step. And then obviously you get the trial by fire as your board member, you learn stuff as you're going. But when Grill and I spoke about this workshop, we thought what we really need to do is look at like sort of a financial training step two that would follow on from the state training. One of the disadvantages of state training is it's a training that's provided to every board member and every community financier member in the state. So it's very high level, generic. There's nothing specific to any particular district. So tonight, we're going to dig into some more specific things, you know, related just to red clay. And certainly a less formal, you know, approach here. If you have questions, just wave at me and I will either answer the question or ask you to hold off because we'll get to it later or something along those lines. Oh, we got to the. Now does my clicker work? Yeah, we just went through. Can you go back a couple of slides? Okay, so our agenda tonight, we have seven finance questions that a school board member should be asking. Not that you aren't. Some of you are already asking these questions. Some of you have have asked them before, but there's seven, seven questions we're going to review that is something a board member is likely going to want to be asking from time to time. And then we're going to transition into an activity related to setting priorities of approach to budgeting that I think is a better way to go than some of the other approaches to budgeting. And then, of course, questions. So seven questions, and I have to share. I adapted the.
Somebody still.
We can't see the presentation. It has, it has to be shared through the Zoom.
Right, I think you gotta share it from the computer, not your iPad.
Okay, it's starting. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
You can see it now.
So yes, these are seven questions that board members should be thinking about or may want to ask. And I've adapted them from the Texas Association of School Boards had a list. They actually had 10 questions that board members should ask. I figured Delaware is smaller, so maybe we should should narrow it down to seven. And every state's a little bit different in terms of school funding. So I modified those to be more appropriate for Delaware. First question is, do we have a budgeting and finance calendar? Just based on the structure that you can imagine that my answer should be yes, right? If it wasn't based on this question, it should be yes. What is our current fund balance and how does it compare with the past five years? How long would that balance last if funding stopped? You know, if our revenue stopped? What's our current rate of tax collections? What assumptions are incorporated? That's one that it's a big one that we look at in red clay. It's not one that we typically speak about at a board meeting because by the time you see board documents, all those assumptions have been baked into the, baked into the budget. Where do we get our funds and then how we spend our funds? So those are the seven, seven questions we're going to work through before we get to our, our activity that we're going to. So the first one, do we have a budgeting calendar? Yes, we do. And I'm going to go through these and some of these should look very familiar to you because a lot of these steps in the budgeting process are part of a board meeting where they, they get voted on. They're certainly a part of our CFRC discussions that we have. Are we not seeing the PowerPoint?
Well, I can see it.
She's saying, but it's not advanced, you know, the screens.
Are you sharing it from your iPad?
Sure.
That's why, because my mouse is clicking, is clicking the computer, so it won't move your iPad. There we go. PC, can you see the budgeting calendar slide?
Um, yes.
Okay, great, great. So if we work through these, these slides, the budget, you know, you often see the July budget, that step meeting, we always have to hold a couple of weeks earlier. People always ask, why is it earlier? It's because of me. We have to hold that earlier because we have to send our tax warrant to the county by a date that's in code. So we usually have that meeting early, but that's really not, that might be the first time you look at the next year's budget, but it really starts long before that. So if we look through here, the the process really starts between April and June in red clay, and that's when we do a couple of things. We look at our property taxes from the previous year, make some assumptions about the next year. We look at our student counts. You all heard about the September 30th count, which is a, a big production in Delaware. There's also another count, May 1st is, is another count, and May 1st doesn't get as much publicity, but that's the one where we go through and we work with the state of Delaware to estimate how many units we're going to have the next year. Another thing we look at is state budget changes. This is my 32nd year in Delaware. Recently, the General Assembly's had all their bills done long before the end of the term. But it's, it's in the, in the, in years past, it was not uncommon to see budget bills that are coming in very end of June, even into, I think sometime, if they don't finish by June 30th, they can't exit session until they finish it. So there were some, some very late years, but all that, that happens at the end of the session and stuff that we need to look at and be aware of and work into our budget. We also need to look at what our district expenditure growth is going to be to weigh that with the other factors, the other assumptions. And then we have to set our priorities. We're going to talk a little bit more about setting priorities later tonight. And the next thing that, that happens is the tax rate, the preliminary budget gets voted on. That's the one that, that the board votes on in June. And usually at that point, I probably told you, you don't really have much choice. Some things you don't have any choice because it's in code, but it's also very late to make significant changes to a budget. So one of the things that's important about this calendar is to be thinking about if you have input or questions or suggestions. A lot of times that first week of July might be too late for us to incorporate some of those. So earlier in the year would be the time to talk about those things. And then we have three checkpoints throughout the year. The first one is the first financial position report that's as of July 1st. And that's one that the board does vote. It's one that we talk about in depth at the CFRC. That's the one that shows us and shows the state of Delaware, whether or not we will have enough funding to get through October 15th. Why we look at October 15th is that most of our funds, our local funds come in when property taxes get paid. And that first significant payment comes in October. So that the key to a school district in Delaware is making sure that from July 1 until October 15th, you can afford to pay your staff. Obviously, they get paid year round, even the teacher who's working, you know, on a 10-month contract, most of them elect to be paid throughout the year. So we still have payroll obligations in the summer. Obviously, utilities. And then in addition to that, schools are cranking up for the year, so they're purchasing things and materials that have to come in. So we have to gauge all those expenditures, figure out whether we have enough funding. And then that first financial report is one that, that we put together, Department of Ed looks at it, they have metrics that they compare it to previous years, and they'll call if they have questions. And that's really the first time that, that the Department of Ed and the school districts communicate back and forth to make sure everything's good and so that we have time to make changes if we need to. The next thing that happens from September through October is our student count and staffing confirmation. I mentioned the September 30th count. Some of you have lived through that process. You've certainly heard about it. Mark's smiling in the back. I know he loves that process. It's it's a great use of his time. But the reality is it's an extremely important piece because if students do not show up in school, and there's a whole process that Mark and his team goes through, but all of our funding is dependent upon those students. So if we don't count students during that time in September, it impacts the amount of funding that we get from the state. And so that, that goes into the, the final budget. Then we have our second financial position report, and that one is a second time that we formally share with Department of Ed our, where we are with our various funding balances, where we think we're going to be. And that's done at a point in time where we're partway through the year, and there's still time to change the budget because the final budget gets voted on. Usually in January or February, different districts do it differently. For the last couple of years, we've done it in February. The later you do it, the more information you have, the closer that budget can be. But that second financial position report would tell us, or would tell the Department of Ed, hey, you're not on track to be able to meet your obligations. It's time to look at that budget and make, make changes. And then we do our, as I mentioned, our final budget. Then we have our third financial position report as of March 31st. And that's really the last report from this current fiscal year, but it's the first one for the next year. Because that's one that's also looking at where we're going to end. And that ending balance is important as we go into the, the next year. Any questions about that, that budget calendar? A lot of those are things you've heard before at different times, but probably not in context of how they all go together.
Ted, the thing I would ask is, you know, it's really interesting on the financial position reports. They're not equally spaced throughout.
Well, they're, they're, they're quarterly reports, but there is one that we don't have to do, I guess, would be the one. So if you look at it, but you're right. And it drives me, every time I go to put them, I'm like, wait a minute, they're, they're quarterly. There should be four.
Right.
There are, there are only three.
Why did they drop on the quarterly just a little bit?
Just less. Well, I mean, the history of these reports was as districts, whether it was Christine or Red Clay in years past, ran into financial issues. The thought was, well, let's put a report in place so that we can see it before it's too late. And so the first one was to make sure we can meet our obligations in October. So that one makes perfect sense. So why do we do it? Then it makes sense to do one mid-year that December 31st gives us an idea of where we are. We're halfway through the fiscal year at that point, July 1 through, you know, December, we're halfway through. That gives us a chance to say, hey, do we need to modify our, our final budget? You know, a lot of our, our principals even see that preliminary budget. They see that number in their budget and they think that's my number for the entire year. And we try to, but it's certainly possible that if, if things were going in a different direction, we might have to modify those, those numbers. And obviously, that, that would be a problem for schools running any budget management. So that's that second one. And then that third one's important because it shows us when we get to the end of the, end of the fiscal year where we're going to be. So it makes sense. And sometimes I call them quarterly reports, which is really misleading because they happen on a quarter, but there's only three. Any other, that's a good, good point. Any other questions? So that's one question down. You're all experts out of the, out of the second question. We've got one down. The second one is whether we have. Just didn't bring it, moving to the second one. The second one is what is our fund balance? And you've heard that before. Oftentimes, a referendum, people say, well, why do you need to go to a referendum? And we talk about our balance is not sufficient. And this shows the history of the last five years. If you look back at FY21, our balance at the end of the year was $18 million. And you'll see over three years, it was declining. And that's by design in Delaware because of the way we do school, local, local funding schools with referendum. When you have a referendum, you bring in those funds and then you spend them down until you, you know, because every year your costs go up based on inflation or cost of employees or whatever. Once you cannot go any further, that's when it's time to go back to referendum. And you'll see that's what's been happening. We had those four years where it was declining. And then we held a referendum. This year, our estimated end of the year balance is $5.9 million, which is essentially the same as FY24. I mean, it's slightly higher, but essentially it's the same. And then we'll see in FY26, it starts to creep back up based on our referendum, which was phased in over, over three years. And so then, once that balance gets up again, we will be spending that down until it's time to go back to referendum. And then in addition, you know, when you, when you say what's your local, your current fund balance, everyone has a different way of defining what that is. The way I would describe it, and most districts in Delaware refer to it as it's local funds that you can use for whatever you need to use them for, to meet your obligations. And then what red clay has in addition to that operating current fund balances, we have a reserve. It's a $5 million reserve that we have in local funds, and the intent is to not spend them without it coming to the board to say, hey, something's happening. You know, the, the theory that people always talked about was you might need a reserve like that if there were a pandemic, right? And we used to think, well, that'll never happen. Sure enough, it happened. And what we saw during the pandemic was the federal government certainly stepped in and provided a lot of funding. So we didn't need to step into a reserve. But that's the type of thing, those, that $5 million is not because a principal wants to spend a little bit more or Mark wants to take on. Or Mark, I keep picking a mark because I'm looking, right? I don't want to look at those. You know, that, that $5 million reserve is not just a, a year to year, let's spend a little bit more money. That would be, there's a significant reason. A catastrophic failure of a building that we need to address. And we would certainly go to the, the board and let you know.
So our unrestricted local funds are really 10.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And I don't think of it as 10 because that $5 million is really off the table. It's not something that.
Where's it shown?
Where's it shown? It's in a separate appropriation on the monthly expenditure report. And I think, PC, it was your suggestion that we should add it there because we, you know, we're not trying to hide it. But if you look at the revenue sources on that expenditure report, at the very bottom, there's an asterisk and it says local fundraiser or something about the word.
We're curious that.
And that we, right.
Have we ever touched it?
Well, we have not spent it permanently. We've certainly borrowed it temporarily, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. That's September. That, that July through September, that's when you need to use all of your funds, and then they go right back.
We don't report that to, on our, our financial statement?
No, we do not.
All right.
We do not. And we could certainly talk about the CFRC away, you know, at our monthly meetings to.
I'm not saying do it. I'm just clarifying my own mind.
Yeah. So any questions about that current fund balance?
Thanks, Martin.
So the third question that they ask in Texas is, how long would that balance last? If all of your revenue stopped? Now, all of our revenue stopping is, is, is really catastrophic, and we don't count on the state of Delaware's revenue stopping because we certainly have bigger problems with the state of Delaware is not able to, to maintain their commitments. But we really look at our, our local funds and our local expenditures. There's really two different ways that I would interpret this question, how long would our balance last? One is, as I mentioned earlier, it's an indicator of whether or not it's time to be talking about going to a referendum. And, and a super simple way of looking at that is, every year in your budget, I talk about our, our deficit spending, whether we're spending more than we're bringing in. We're spending more than we're bringing in. We divide that into that balance, and that would tell us, and I'm just a, a super simple example, if we have a $5 million balance, which is about what our balance is, if we were to be deficit spending, meaning that we're spending a million dollars more than we're bringing in, it would eat into that $5 million. After the first year, it would be down to four, three, two, and so forth. So that would be that indicator right now. We could go five years before we'd have to go to a referendum. The second way to look at it, and it's probably the more critical thing that we look at, is we have to be able to meet those obligations between July 1st and October 15th. Because that's when those tax receipts come in. And it, all, all districts in Delaware look for that October 16th or 17th, depending on when it falls in the week, that payment. As an example, this year, we all got the, the notice, and it was significantly less than we were expecting. And you could see the emails from all the districts panicking, like what happened? And it turned out it was as simple as one of the mortgage processing companies had an electronic transfer that didn't go through to the county. And they got to the point where they couldn't wait any longer. So they just sent what they had. And it caused, you know, consternation with all of us because when you're expecting to get 70% of your revenues or whatever that number is, and you get half of it, you don't know what, what's going on. Are people not paying their taxes? Is there something else going on? And it was as simple as an electronic wire didn't come through. They corrected it, and two days later, we got, got the payment we were expecting.
And they got the float.
Pardon me?
And they got the float.
Yes. They, they got a day of, of virtual. Actually, they hadn't received the money, but, but yes, they did get an extra day. But but the bottom line is that's, that's a critical thing that we're looking at because it is very common in Delaware school districts unless you've just passed a full referendum, that that balance is not sufficient to just cover expenses, you know, for, for a period of time. As an example, our balance, our local funds' balance, October 15th was only $3.9 million. Which in the scheme of a district budget, that's about as tight as we'd want to cut it because obviously we have payroll to make, which is about $5 million a month. So we, we know that money's coming, but we also want to make sure that we have enough there to cover.
Ted, I think, just repeat that again. I just think for the board to, to kind of comprehend what's our monthly payroll.
Monthly payroll, and that's, 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 that's in the, in the community financial, that financial position report, the CFRC looks at each, or three times, I almost said like fourteen.
Each quarter.
Each quarter, we look, three quarters, I look at it. And one of the things we have to show on there is what is our monthly payroll? And it does vary a little bit because we have 26 pays most years, and there's 12 months. So there are two months with a third pay, so it's not completely flat. We also have three pay cycles where there are very significant increases due to EPR, when teachers get, for instance, a football coach, they get their, their payment in November. So there's a November pay cycle that, that has an uptick because of all those EPR contracts. Then it goes back down. It's pretty, pretty static until the next, the mid-year one. But bottom line, $5 million just for payroll per month. So October 15th, we've got $3.9 million sitting there. We know we've got a $5 million payroll coming. Where's that money? Well, we know it's coming. This year, we got half of what we thought. It was still enough. But it was something that I think it was Eric Loftus in that, what I mean, said in the first email, did you guys notice a problem? We didn't get all our money. And we all were saying, where'd it go?
That's when we'd use our reserve.
And, and that's, and, and that's exactly when we, we would use our reserves. And then we would put it back as soon. That's the first thing we do. Stephanie and I, when that money comes in, is we, we keep track very careful. meticulous records of every time we borrow that money, and we go back and we unwind each of those transactions to put them back. Because that's, that's one of those purposes for that reserve. It's to, to sort of float until we get expected revenue.
And is that reserved in a high interest rate account?
It, it is not. And I, I guess that's a relative term, term, high interest.
Well, I know, but I mean, people were getting five, six percent.
The state manages our cash. We do not. I don't believe we have the authority to invest it on our own. But the state does. And there was a number of years before COVID where the interest rate was zero. And if you look back at the budgets over the years, you saw income was zero. Positive piece of, of the pandemic, if, if you can call it that, was interest rates did increase. And the state also changed the way they calculated their interest. So we do get, it's a long answer to your question, Kathy, but yes, we do get interest on our, our receipts. And so the longer we keep them, the more money we can get when we get a bill from, for instance, our charter payment, first payment in September is $5 million. There are districts that move that slowly because every day you're getting interest on that $5 million. Because, because it does add up. Even when interest rates are relatively low, when you're talking about that, that amount of money, it does add. So those are the two reasons that, that it would be good to think about, how long does that reserve lie, or how long does that balance last?
But when you look at the reserve, the thing that I guess it surprises me a little bit is you're looking just at the unrestricted local. I figure that out.
Right.
Because we get all this other funding too.
Right.
But that doesn't, we only look at the unrestricted.
Right. And that's, if you look at, and I didn't want to throw a bunch of numbers here, but if you look at what we spend in the first quarter of the year, it is of local funds, it's much less than we spend throughout the rest of the year. And that's exactly your point. We have, for instance, Division III funds that we get from the state. We, all districts use them to start off meeting payroll because we haven't gotten those local funds yet. So we, we, that's what we do in the summer is we manage that cash and manage those funds and figure out, okay, which funds will we use to pay this? Which funds will we use to, to pay them? Any questions about that, that question in terms of how long that balance lasts? Maria, can you? What is our current rate of tax collections? And I, I kind of chuckled when I saw that that's something that they ask in Texas. That's not really an issue for us typically because we don't deal with tax collecting. In, in Delaware, the county, Newcastle, Kenton, Sussex, collect property taxes for the county tax and for education taxes. And then they remit it to us after they collect it. And they do a very good job of collecting property receipts and then sending them to us on a regular basis. But since the Texas State School Board says it's a good question to ask, I figured if you didn't include it here. And you can see here, over the last four or five years, our estimate in terms of what we were going to collect in taxes, and then it shows our actual. And with the exception of last year, which we'll talk about separately, you'll see that we were up over 100%. And so someone might ask, well, how can you be over 100%? If you had an estimate, how can you collect more than you were supposed to collect? That's because that estimate includes a 1% placeholder for delinquencies. And what we have found is that 1% is sufficient. And you can see that from 2020 through 2023, each year, we were at 101.2, 101.7, 102. So, so that meant that, that 99% was a very reasonable number. Many years ago, when there was the mortgage crisis and there were so many mortgages and houses going into foreclosure, a lot of districts worried, well, does that mean we're not going to get our tax money? And, and these issues really compounded. And what districts found was that even if a bank forecloses on a property, they pay the taxes because they want to keep the interest in that property. So as, as much as it was difficult for homeowners, from a school district perspective, even in, in a situation like that, we still got our money. And some of you remember, you've been on the board for a while. The county went through an initiative to collect back taxes about, it was about five or six years ago, and each board had to vote whether or not they wanted to take part of, of that activity. So they outsourced a company that works through the logs and works with people to get taxes current. So each year, each month when we get our, our tax bill, it shows us how much was from current taxes. And there's always a small amount from that, that 1% or so from previous years that they have, have collected. So our rate of tax collections in Delaware is really not an issue. Our county does a great job. Last year, that 99.7 is not a result of poor collections. It's a result of a change in assessed value, and it's something we talked about at the CFRC quite a bit. Every year, there are minor changes in assessed values. Someone may question they, if, if they sell a property and it was tax exempt and something didn't get carried over, they get a tax bill. And then they go to the county and say, hey, this is supposed to be a tax exempt property. You're charging me tax, and it gets fixed. Last year, we had two properties that went through the process of claiming that their assessments were incorrect. And just those two properties resulted in over a million dollars in funds that we were counting on, that we didn't get. And, and the problem with that is that's a gift that keeps on giving. Because even our referendum modeling was based on, you know, a history, and you can go back even before 2020. These numbers have always been right on. We were estimating that we would get that. We got the collections, but this was a case of the county saying to two tax, two property owners, your property's not worth what we said it was worth. We're going to modify that number and you will be paying less in property tax. So not only do we get less last year, our referendum was based on an assessed value that is now less. And so it will continue to be less each year.
And this, you probably, it was the Tom Morton property and the Wegmans property.
The one property was the, the Wegmans property, which is owned by a company called Crisp Partners. And the second one was the Wilmington Country Club.
And did, wasn't.
That was just recent, through a legislation that, yeah, the property was.
Oh, the Todd Morton.
Yeah, that's.
That is another one.
And that's going to impact us too.
That will impact, not nearly to the scale of those two, but there is an.
$175,000 a year or something.
Yeah, off the top of my head. And, and the thing about that one, there's properties in Christina that are affected by that one, that, that Todd Morton organization, as well as in red clay, and I think possibly Brandy wanted to. Representative Williams called and asked some questions about that because one of the things she noted is that the General Assembly can pass a bill that, that erases assessed value from a property. And, and there might be very good reason, in the case of Todd Morton, they provide low-income housing families. So it's not our place to argue with whether or not that's a good policy decision. It sounds like a good policy decision. But what Representative Williams has pointed out correctly is that there's an impact to school districts that we cannot address. There's no way for us to address that.
Can't afford it either.
So that's something they're looking at, whether there's a way to perhaps provide a mechanism for a school board to say, hey, we counted on this money. Through no, no activity of our own, the county made a decision or the state made a decision to. Through no, no activity of our own, the county made a decision or the state made a decision to remove that assessed value. Do you want to change it? Of course, that means the school board would be unilaterally changing a tax rate, which in Delaware, tax rates are set by referendum. So so there's implications to doing that, but it's certainly an issue and and this issue last year is what really brought it to the forefront. And it's not the first time. Um, Fiskers was an example, the, you know, the the auto factory, the Unboxing Road. When that became Fiskers, there was a bunch of stuff going around with the assessed value of that property. And so there was a a big swing. There was also a lawsuit years ago with the phone companies. With the, um, you know, when you're driving around, you see the the Verizon buildings and the windows, those little substations for phone equipment. There was a lawsuit about what the um depreciation value was on those properties. And they won. And that resulted in a hit to all districts in Delaware, that all that assessed value, the phone company owned. Was suddenly less than what we were counting on it to be. And so it it does happen, it's not, um, it's rare, and certainly a million dollars. And and the other thing that's tough is it was right during our referendum. Modeling, right? If it was in the mid-year, if it had been two years before. When we looked at the referendum modeling, we would have had a set assessed value that we would have based on. Instead, we set that model. If you remember, the board sets a rate for referendum long before the vote in February. Well, from when that modeling was done, until then. We had a big change in our assess, in our assessed value that that. You know, there's nothing we can do about it at this point, other than point out that that's. The reason that that percentage is lower last year has nothing to do with the county not collecting taxes. It has to do with the county waiving taxes in essence for for two properties. And and again, it's not my place to say whether they did it correctly or incorrectly. Um, certainly, they recognized the value of it, they hired a third party assessment firm to come in and. And look at the appeal and the the company agreed that the property owners were correct. And the county had had um not set the assessed value correctly.
So Ted, when we do go through reassessment, might not this be a big issue?
Reassessment, um.
I mean, in terms of people appealing and potentially win.
Yes, right, right. Um, certainly, that's an ob, there's a couple of options with this with reassessment. And the CFRC has talked about making that a topic at a CFRC meeting because it certainly has an impact. But the thought was that we might propose to the board that you turn that into a workshop. So that the community has a chance to real, I mean, certainly the CFRC are open meetings. But but it's going to be a big issue. Right now, we don't have the information yet to share. But in essence, when assessed values change due to reassessment. It doesn't change this because.
Right.
As a board, you will reset the property, the rate to bring in same amount of money, it's supposed to be revenue neutral. So if, for instance, we brought in eighty one million dollars this year. Next year, we should bring, if you take out the the referendum and all other factors, we would bring in eighty one million dollars again next year. So if the assessed value goes up. As a board, you'll be decreasing the rate on that assessed value. Um, there there's some nuances to it, so it's certainly something that I think we'll want to talk about this spring once we have concrete.
Good, because the people who go up will likely peel it.
That that they may.
And they may win.
Right, and people are starting to get those um, those letters in the mail now.
Company is starting to circulate.
Right, and there are people who say, by default, just appeal it. But whether there's logic to it or not, I mean, I guess people argue if if you bombard an entity with a bunch of requests. They may not be able to put as much time into those, I I don't believe that's the case, the county is going to look through all of them. But there's also another nuance of that. For at least one quarter, the county will not be providing any increases in assessed value. And we do see some increases from time to time, usually. At this point in Red Clay, they're small because there's not a lot of development going on. But if someone, there's a few properties in Hockeston right now that were mushroom farms. They're being subdivided and being developed into a handful of properties. That results in a a small uptick in assessed value, we've been seeing. And and I estimate about a quarter percent a year, which is not. I mean, Appicoinum sees much more than that because of all the growth that's going on. But when they do this reassessment in the spring, there's a whole quarter where they will not be. Processing any of those increases in assessments because at some point you have to hold everything constant to do that work. And so we will not benefit from that quarter worth of improvements. In assessed value that we typically see. And that's why, this is another topic, uh, another part of that discussion. Our each board in July has the authority to reset that tax rate and include a buffer to account for that. And and that's, I don't want to get ahead of, we don't have the data from the county yet, but that is something that we will want to look at and and. You know, our job will be to share that data with you so that you can make an informed decision when it comes to to July. So a- as of now, we have that on the schedule this spring for the CFRC and and as a board, you can talk about. How you want to advertise, how you'd like us to advertise that to really make sure that we get the word out. There is a lot of misconception out there. Um, Steve gets a lot of calls, he he does a great job at answering. Probably ninety percent of them, but there are many people that call and have heard that assessed value, property assessments are going to go up. And they've heard they're going to be doubled. And they assume that means their property tax will double. And they don't know how they're going to afford it, and we have to explain. It does not mean that your tax will double, your assessed value will go up, but your rate will go down. It's not a complete wash, there's there's different nuances to it, but it's not what some people are, you know, it's not the. The extreme cases, some people who who don't know the process are are concerned about. Um, Sussex is ahead of us in this process, they already did their reassessments. They um, their summary of the process was it was, it was very difficult. They didn't necessarily have their new assessed values until the very end of June. Yet, a board still has to vote on the tax rate in July.
We, they didn't get hit with it this year, because I have a. We didn't get hit with it this year.
Really? Interesting. So so that's our current rate of of tax collections, another reason that that percentage is is over, we assume that one percent. But the other thing we never know for sure is how much money is going to be credited to either seniors or veterans. Because there is a tax credit for seniors and veterans in Newcastle, in in all counties. And that doesn't affect us in that the state pays us for that money. So if, for instance, Jose, not that he's a senior, but if Jose were to get.
Like my member.
I'm a senior, I take that five months.
Kathy has volunteered that she's a senior, I'm not making any assumptions. If Kathy gets a a credit on her tax bill due to that law. We don't see negative revenue. We see a rev, we see a decrease in local revenue, but then the state compensates it, it's a state um credit, so they pay for it. But we never know exactly how many homeowners are going to get that, so we look at it based on last year. So if more homeowners get it, we have less money coming in in our county taxes, but then the state gives us more. So it all comes out, but that's just another piece of that um. That percentage of estimate that we get. But but overall, it shows that our estimates are pretty solid, but i- it's not a kind of, we don't have a concern of delinquent taxes in in Delaware. We're going to keep on to the fourth question. Excuse me, fifth question. What assumptions do we use in our budget? And this is one that we've, I don't think ever really talked about at a board meeting, but I I think it's important that you understand. Um, how we do these and what these assumptions are, because the whole point of an assumption is they can be wrong. And and the hope is that they're close and that some are over and some are under and that there is no impact, but I I did think it was important to go through them. Um, you know, just like your home budget, you may have a an expense that's the same every year. If you have a car payment, typically those are not adjustable and you know every month your car payment is X. And we have some expenses in Red Clay that are like that. But then you also have expenses at home, heating well, you don't know what heating well is going to be.
How about insurance?
Insurance, and and the the insurance rate increases that we've all seen in our homes and with our cars, we're seeing in school districts. Um, by some accounts, school district insurance is raising even more than other types of insurance. One challenge in Delaware is I believe there's only two companies that offer school insurance in Delaware. And it's supply and demand, right? If you have fewer companies offering insurance. There's not as much pressure to keep those rates, so those rates have gone up um pretty much every year quite a bit of the last couple of years. So there's a couple of assumptions on the revenue side that we make, we've talked about some of our property assessments, that that's an assumption. It's going to be very difficult going into next year what that assumption is going to be because of this reassessment in terms of whether people, as Kathy pointed out, they they question their assessments. And and there's a large number that that win. We've made an assumption of what those assessed values are going to be, and that would have a negative impact to us. Delinquencies remain at one percent, where we we assume that, and it's been historically an accurate number. Uh, student growth and units earned is a big one. It's been relatively easy for us recently because our student population is not changing significantly. You know, if we're up a hundred students, certainly if a hundred students were all in one building, that might be significant, but a hundred students spread throughout. Fourteen thousand students is is not a significant change. So we're able to estimate that fairly, fair fairly well. Um, choice and charter numbers is one that we also have to estimate. Every time a student goes to charter. The money, the local money that we spend on that student goes with them. You know, make it sound like they carry it with them, but you know, we transfer that money to the charter schools. And then with chart with choice, the same thing, if a Red Clay student chooses to go to Brandywine or to Christina. The local funds from Red Clay get transferred to that district. And likewise, if a Christina student chooses to come to Red Clay, the money comes to us. And so there's there's in and there's out, but that can change. If fewer kids choose to leave Red Clay for some reason. We have an increase. If fewer students come to choose to come into Red Clay, we'd also see an increase. So that's a number we, um, I worked closely in the past with Christine Buley, and this year I'll be working very closely with Sean. Started to figure out, based on our choice invitations, how many of those invitations were accepted? How many were in district, how many were out of district? How many students chose to go to charter school Wilmington or DMA or Gateway or any of the other charter schools? Because that that does have an impact to our budget. Not necessarily good or bad, it's just the reality of of budgeting. So those are the the probably the biggest assumptions we make on the revenue side.
On that, if if the change in the student attending a school happens after the September thirtieth count. Does it get adjusted or does it stay the way?
Did someone ask you, did someone ask you to ask that question? That's a a phone of contention in Delaware. Um, historically, we have seen at times, a student sign a first year agreement to go to a charter school. And then September thirtieth comes. And then in October, they might say, hey, we'd really like to come to our school.
Yeah.
And the reality is they've signed a first year agreement. It was put in place so that we all have budget certainty on both sides, not just the district, not just the traditional district, but also the charter school. They are not supposed to come back unless both people agree. And the piece of that agreement that people don't always think about is the money should go with it.
But it doesn't go back, it stays.
It stays unless we make an, unless we make an agreement. So oftentimes, we would say, sure, we'd love to have a student come back. But Gateway, I'm just picking Gateway randomly, Gateway got funded for that student. And so it's only fair that some of that money comes back to Red Clay because Gateway educated the student for a month. We're educating the student for the rest of the year. So in theory, that happens. We also, as Mark would tell you, we're in the business of worrying about our kids and doing what's best for our kids. So it's very difficult for me in the in the finance office to say to Mark. This student coming back to McCain or Dickinson or AI or kind of whatever school is in the best interest of that student. But we're not going to let it happen because I want my, you know, my money. And so it it doesn't always happen, but it is something that we we um. We look at carefully because we've, we've spent that money based on on or not spent it based on where that student's going to be.
That's what I thought.
Um, and and in other years, you've had to do the hearing for the class size waiver. Right? And when the class size waiver happen, if if the waiver is not granted and we have class sizes that are too big. We might have to hire additional teachers. Well, if a bunch of students come back from charter or choice in October. Let's say you have three or four students in one. We we, if you see these things happen, if you have a set of twins, it comes back. And they want to be in the same classroom and the principal decides that's the best place. That classroom might go above that threshold, all based on us accepting a student back who signed that one.
And there's no way to get funding for that second teacher.
Not, not, no, there's no way to do that.
So we dip into.
We we dip into that read, at the end of the year, our balance will be. Um, and and again, one student, I like to thank and Mark, I keep, I'm sorry, I keep picking on Mark. Move over there.
Hard to do there, Mark.
But um, you know, one one student is not going to break a budget. But multiple students does have an impact, so that's why we do take that hard line. And and usually we try and work with the other district or the charter school and not get the parent stuck in the middle. Because the parents, all they want to do is what's best for their their kid, and they not understand why we're not saying, we'll see you tomorrow, right? There there's things we have to work with the charter school.
So do most of, do most of the schools pay us back?
We don't take that many kids back.
Okay, but the ones that we do, do they, do we?
There have been times that we have received money. There's also times, especially with the the K twelve districts.
We we. Having time sounds like in free.
It is in free.
Okay.
And the number, I think, and also just that there aren't a large volume of of numbers. Typically, it's a good call situation where there's, there's a hardship with a family, but you, again, you've worked with the school. In the best interest of the child to be able to. Look at that one year charter agreement to break this.
So the other thing I'd ask, because you kept talking about the local piece of them, but there's also state and federal pieces of them. So they go and they don't come back. Or how do, when we, when we're figuring out the number that.
State, it would depend on the fund because state funds are split into all different appropriations, but essentially, it's all based on that September thirtieth. So if if they're providing us. If if we've, if our unit count says that we have twelve hundred units. And we were to take a bunch of students back, that unit count doesn't get modified.
Right, and and the federal money doesn't come back, we might get some state money, local money.
Local, this is all pretty much a local funding conversation.
Yes, so, and when we, when we figure out our local number for the students. Is our local number like the um needs-based funding or is it a number per student? Is it one number or is it a different number based on the?
Both, it's a per student, but it has to do with the needs-based.
It's a.
Um, classification of that student, so let's say we had ten students that left Red Clay and went to Christina. Not all ten of those students take the same amount of money, wouldn't them, there's a a process and that process was changed last year. Um, at the state level to to. Account for special needs differently than it was accounted for in the past, so it's, I mean. In the end, we receive about five million dollars from choice, we're we're a net.
We're a net importer.
We have more students that choose to come to Red Clay than choose to leave Red Clay. And I certainly would agree with why, but the the numbers have shown, and it's increased, I I looked at it in two thousand eight. Our net inflow was seven hundred and sixty six students. In twenty twenty five, and it's still not final because we're still going through the the choice verification window. It's ten, ten thousand, ten students, so certainly in the last, since two thousand eight, we've gone up about three hundred students wanting to come in. Or fewer leaving, you know, either way, that number gets impacted. It's.
It's good.
It is good.
Regaining or retaining more, so it's, I mean, we're we're holding on to them, so that's a good.
So as far as the the assumptions on the expenditures, um, there there's three that are fairly, but there's others, but there's three that I wanted to highlight. One is, um, in my opinion, one of the biggest concerns in public education in this country right now, and that is special education estimates. Because special education is funded based on the student need, not based on your revenue. And in in a free market, that's impossible, right? I mean, every day you make decisions in your home. Based on how much money you have and you have to decide whether or not you really need whatever it is. My daughter told me she needs one of those pens to draw on her iPad, I don't think she really needs that. But she feels she needs that and she can make a decision based on how much money she's making, whether she can afford it. Well, with special education, money shouldn't be a part of that question. So if the student needs something, we have to provide it. Yet, we can't change our revenue based on that, at least not mid-year. The tuition tax is something that you set each year, but we still need to be extremely careful of that estimate, and that's why. Um, you know, I I sort of hound Sarah in the spring and in the summer and ask her questions that she tells me she can't answer. Because I'll say, how many more psychologists do you think we're going to need? And she'll say, well, how many more minutes will students need? And I'll say, I I don't know. And so it's it's that back and forth, we have to make an estimate of, and and it's not just psychologists, it could be OT, it could be PT, it could be paraprofessionals. But there are lots of things involved with special education students that do not tie directly to our revenue. And that that's a challenge, it's it's makes it very difficult.
Those needs are increasing, so can you estimate the percentage every year?
We do estimate, and and we've been um fairly good about that, but the whole point about special education is it's individualized. So it's hard to say we're going to have a X percent increase if it's supposed to be driven by the student. And the student needs might be different, but pre-K is a perfect example, every year for the last. At least, how long it's been, ten years, pre-K has been reliably exploding. I think Kathy said exploding, that's not, that's not an incorrect rate, it has been increasing significantly, and so we have estimated for that, so.
When you say pre-K, are you talking about um? Red Clay funded?
I'm talking about.
Are you talking?
Pre-K needs just in general that obviously are our needs, but so two things. If you look at our early years program. The majority, if not all of those students are there because of developmental delays through through child line.
Yeah, child.
Which then lets us know there is a level of, you know, predictability in terms of that, but you also don't know who's coming in. So yesterday, or today, excuse, today's the fourth, choice window opens, right? And as we did with the 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 choice open house. There is no way of determining unless a parent identifies that that child is choicing in based on student with disability. So we could be a net importer, but that also could mean that those students who are coming in directly have a higher level or degree of need. That isn't necessarily accounted for. That makes sense.
So do we have a cap on earlier program? I'm just, I'm probably getting off the subject here, do we have a cap on early years if you?
It continues to grow, so if if we if if.
So we can't say no to an early years program child.
Based on child fine, so we can't deny a child, and we also have a birth to three mandate. And so if you look at over the last three years, if you go to uh Central EYP, our earliest program. We've steadily, to the point now where we have no.
No more room.
There's no more.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. Right, so again, that's just the nature of who we are as a public school, we have to educate them all.
How do we account for more kids going to come in next year if there's no more room now?
Well, that's.
That's what Dr. Brumoff has, a school. We have to figure it out.
Classroom for a pre-K.
So are we working on that?
We always work on, but there's no, also there's no capital funding for early years program. So that becomes a total.
Oh, I didn't realize that, there's no capital funding for early years.
So we can't go out the referendum to fund a, uh, expansion of our earlier. That's locally funded.
Oh.
So that just, I mean, again, I think generally speaking, when you understand the complexity of. The needs that we have and generally speaking, when we, where we're going out and the fact that, yeah, you can go out the referendum, but that's a local expense. When you go out to look at that, that expansion of that program. From a capital side.
Our major cap funds when we did the referendum was 6040, you heard that over and over, the state pays 60, we pay 40. If we were to build a kindergarten center. Or a pre-K center, again, a pre, pre-K center, it would be a hundred percent local, zero percent state, the state does not fund. So it is, it is significant. That's a good thing, it's a funny thing. Um, attrition versus steps and lanes is a big one that some districts, especially downstate have really struggled with recently because things change. Attrition, when I say attrition, I'm talking about mainly teachers, all stat, but mainly teachers, because that's the largest number of, of employees in our groups. Every year we have teachers that leave, whether they retire, whether they, um, decide to go into a different profession or whether they decide to go to another district. Those teachers leave and then most of the time we have to replace them. So if a teacher leaves, we hire, you know, one out, one, one leaves, one comes in for the most part. And what typically happens is when one leaves, there are more experienced teacher. They might have 20 years, if they're retiring, they might have 30 years in. They might have a master's degree, they might have, you know, the additional credits. When they leave and we replace them, we're typically replacing the, the, the standard assumption is that you replace that teacher. With a new teacher, new hire right out of college, just graduated. And so it's a younger teacher that has one year of experience and maybe just a bachelor's degree, so it's cheaper. That gets balanced with the fact that every year the teachers that we do have. Get more expensive because they have one more year of experience, their pay scale recognizes that experience every year, so it goes up. So typically we, we budget all that and forecast it out, but for the most part, as more expensive teachers leave. You get less expensive teachers coming in. And so it, that would be a net increase of local funds available. But at the same time, the cost of those teachers goes up, so it's, it's been about a wash. What some districts downstate started to see is teachers were retiring from Maryland, moving to the beach and saying. I'm, I'm just, you know, I, I retired, I'm still young enough to work. I'm going to get a job at Laurel or Indian River or Cape Henlopen. So all of a sudden, when it used to be that you'd hire year one, year two teachers with a bachelor's degree. They were finding that they're, and, and we don't, you know, I don't say to Keenan, hey, if a teacher's very experienced, you can't hire them. Obviously can't do that, we wouldn't want to do that, that's great that they're bringing that experience. But that's where these assumptions are important, that we have to keep an eye on them to see if what we've always assumed doesn't hold true. Because then we would need to account for the fact that, for instance, we see teachers from other districts that decide. I've been in district X, I won't mention a district, they've been in district X for a number of years, they want to come to Red Clay. That's great, but that teacher's higher on that pay scale than a teacher graduating from Wilmington University. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, that's just the reality of, of budgeting that we have to count for. And then the last assumption that I'll mention quickly is staffing is based on earned units. And that's something that Red Clay, ever probably 15 years you've heard before, we count on every employee being funded. By the state to some level, not, not a hundred percent obviously, but we do not have a hundred percent funded employees that we are on the hook for. Because a hundred percent, you know, obviously if, if it's a locally funded person, we're paying a hundred percent of their cost. If it's a unit that we're funded by the state, we might be paying 30% of that cost or 40, it depends on the, the pay scale and the type of job. But whether it's custodians, principals, teachers, every job in Delaware. In, in, in any school district, it has a unit and there's a formula for that unit. And we only hire employees if we have a unit. So principals say, hey, can I have another teacher? Do you have a unit for that teacher? Uh, no, well then you can't. It's not quite that simple because we have different types of funding. But one of the, the, the strong things and a good, I should add it as one of the questions that you could be asking as a board member is. Do we have locally funded positions? And we do not have locally funded. Fully local, we, we, we pay part of every employee salary, not a, most, there's a few that the state pays a hundred percent. Um, and we also have some part-time employees, we have some custodial employees that are casual seasonal that we pay. But they are also at-will employees, so if we couldn't afford them, we wouldn't continue them from year to year. But a, as a practice, employees should not be a hundred percent funded locally. Cause that will eat into that balance much more quickly than a referendum could ever.
Parents aren't considered teacher, when you're talking about teacher, you don't consider pair as part of that.
Parents would be in the same way. Parents, we don't have any hundred percent locally funded parents. However, we do have pairs that are a hundred percent tuition funded. And that's because it goes back to special education. There are, based on I E Ps, there are times that a student needs. And, and a good example is autism classrooms.
A one-on-one.
A one-on-one, and autism classroom typically has a teacher and two paraprofessions. Depending on how many students with autism in that classroom, you may not earn two units because a pair is half a unit in state funding. So a teacher's a unit, a pair is half a unit. So if you have a teacher and two pairs, that's two units. If you don't have enough students with autism in that classroom, you don't earn two full units, you might use one and a half units. Which means you're using a hundred percent local funds, but it's not our operating funds, it's the tuition tax. It's that tax that every year the board can set based on that. We look at how many of those pairs we're going to have. And that's something we look at very carefully to try and, and, um. Keep that number in check because as a board, you do have complete discretion to raise that tuition tax as much as you want. Based on our recommendation.
It's always a new twist, every time, it's always a new twist to something.
And, and there's, I mean, there's lots of things that go into that decision, it's, it, it, it's, it's not an easy thing to do. Because the community believes that they should have a say in tax and you're taking that away from them. So there's, there's downstream consequences of taking advantage of that.
Yeah, cause some students you have a pair, they're suitin' all day.
Probably a one-on-one to support them based on whatever their IP needs are.
I've seen that, right?
You want to name two or three of them.
And, and again, that goes back to where I said special education is based on the need. So if the I E P team says that that's a need.
Need.
I can't say we can't have it.
Right.
I mean, I, I can, and then I'm reminded I can't, so we have to find ways.
Just we can't.
Right, we have to find ways, yeah, to fund that. Maria, can you move on to the, um, sixth question? So, so those are the, the, the first five questions. Leave us with the two much more concrete numbers, it's a finance presentation, you probably want to be looking at some numbers. So this is the first, first slide here, where do our funds come from? And this is probably, I, I think it's the first time you've seen it in this way. Because typically we silo things and we talk only about local funds or we talk only about federal funds or only about a certain fund. What I thought was important to do is look at it all together. So, so this shows our total yearly budget last year, our total revenue last year was $364 million. And the, the yellow slide there that's about half is state funds. So those are the funds that we earn through unit count and through other opportunity funds, things like that, but that's, that's state funding.
Oh.
So that's half of our funding comes, which is rare, and if you go to New Jersey, it's not that much.
You say it's 6040 and it's 52.
It, it depends, it fluctuates and it depends.
That's eight percent's a big number.
And, and it depends if you include federal nutrition. Typically, we talk about local versus state in terms of the state funding and our current expense, that 28% number. So if you did the math of 100 million and 188 million, you'd be much closer to that, that percentage that we talk about. But I wanted to show in, in the totality.
Saying those wouldn't be included.
Right, those wouldn't be, I got included, but it's important. Because all of this is tax funded, right? All of this money is coming from somebody paying taxes. So the, 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 the yellow is the state funds, the four different shades of red are all local funds. There's the current expense, that's the one we talk about most frequently, the referendum, um, raises that, that's the current operating funds. There's also the tuition funds, that's the funding, um, primarily for special education and special needs students. Then there's also the match tax, which is a unique little tax in Delaware that's typically the match tax is if the state wants to fund something. Cause they want a new initiative, all the districts say, well, that's great, but we aren't going to referendum. So how are we going to pay for that local share of those teachers to do X? And so what they have done from time to time and say, oh, well, you can put it in the match tax and you can raise your local share. The board can vote to raise that local share. And, 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 you know, it's one percent, it's not a significant percentage of our overall budget, but, but it is a number. It's $4 million, it comes in through that match tax. Then debt service is obviously related to major cap, that's to pay back our, our bonds. And then federal funds, four percent is our federal funds and those are, um, Drell mentioned earlier, title one. This would include title one money that we get and then send right out the door to private schools based on students that, that go to those private schools.
Federal funding is only four percent?
Yes.
But it would be the same thing, you take out nutrition, con expense, we're going to figure out the percentage.
You, you can slice and dice this lots of different ways, but no matter how you look at it, the federal funds that we receive are a very small portion of the overall.
And we're talking title one is basically federal fund.
There's, there's. Title one, title two, title three, title four.
I D E A.
I D E A.
I mean, one of our largest categories of, of spending is special needs. Yet I D E A, which is a federal law, provides less than four percent of our overall funding.
Well.
Not, not to be political on the eve of an election, but that's just.
Yeah, wow, that's some.
Percent, and then nutrition is five percent. And that's a good, a little misleading because nutrition funds are made up of a combination of state funds, federal funds from the USDA, which is separate than our normal. Traditional federal programs. And also a, a very small portion of it is, is from students who pay for their lunch or who purchase all the cart items, you know, dessert or whatever after, after lunch. But, but I thought it was important to show. Overall, not just that local number, because just like we try not to silo within the district and departments. From a financial perspective, it's important to look at the overall picture. But one of the things that's important to keep in mind is not all that money is flexible. So if, for instance, as a board, you want to support an initiative that we believe is important. We can't take that debt service money and use it to hire more teachers. Right? Debt service is probably the most restrictive. The least restrictive is that current expense, that local money, that, that $100 million, the 28%. Is the least restrictive because it's whatever the board wants us to spend it on.
I learned.
I shouldn't say it that way because you'll all be sending me emails with that sentence, because a lot of it is.
And, and I guess a better way of saying what we think we could be able to, what, what we can spend it on, because it gives you the most flexibility. But in essence, it's also restricted because that local fund is attached to a state fund to Ted's point or another program or, or, you know, fund. So that there's not as many rules around it because it is local funding and there's a lot more board discretion. But that money is designated for something else or one of those other pots. And typically, you know, I guess school finance 101 would be division one, division two. Right? Division one being those that are tied to students, staff, programs, division two would be. Facilities, other operating causes and division two money can get transferred into division one bucket.
Like eighty percent of that is already accounted for, right? Just for keeping.
Well, that's, that's a perfect segue into the next slide. Um, if, if this is a slide that shows where all the money comes from. The next slide, Maria, if you could move on to the next slide, shows us how we spend our money. And what I did for this slide is all of our expenditures have an account code. So from an accounting perspective, they all have to do with something. Typically, we show you, you vote on the budget based on operating unit, right? So you would see the McCain, the amount of money allocated for McCain, the amount of money allocated to Mo. Amount of money for maintenance, all those different operating units. This doesn't look at operating unit, it looks at district wide, the types of expenditures based on account codes. And this is not all of them. Because you could just, I mean, you get to the point where there's so many categories, but this is the 12 largest categories in the district's budget. And if you look, 78% of it is salary money. So to Kathy's point about even those local funds, we can't do whatever we want with. We have obligations that, based on our current staffing levels, 78% of our money that we spend goes to salaries. Jill used to call us the Pac-Man graph because it, it looks just like those of us that, that are old enough to have played Pac-Man back in the day. That, that vast majority, that blue portion is based on salary costs that we have. Not that we don't have any discretion, we can certainly adjust staffing levels, but every dollar that comes out of that slice of the pie to go somewhere else. Impacts the number of people. And that's not uncommon to school districts all over the country, it's a, a people intensive business, you need people to do what we do. So most of our money is spent on people.
What's I C T, I'm sorry, what's, what's?
I C T, I was going to go around the other way, but I C T is interdisciplinary.
When kids.
I'm going to forget the acronym. If, if students whose needs can't be met in a traditional public school in Delaware. Might go to a residential school in Maryland or Kentucky or somewhere and, and.
Gotcha.
We fund a portion of it, the state funds the other portion. Our, our portion is 1.9 and that comes out of that tuition tax. Cause again, that's something we don't have any control over. If a student needs a very expensive, intensive environment. I can't say that we don't have the money, you know, put them in a school that's not going to meet their needs. So the state, there's a process.
And there's a strict process by which, so when we, in essence, have a student that has a higher level of need than we can meet. We have to go through that process of demonstrating that we've provided every intervention or exhausted every intervention within the district before we take it to the state. And it's called the interdisciplinary or inter-agency collaborative team.
Okay, there's, there's your I C T.
It's the inter-agency collaborative team where we basically justify the need to the state. That this student requires a high level of service at a specialized school or somewhere that may not necessarily be in the state of Delaware. And based on what we've actually discussed during the, um, most recent, um, school climate and, and behavior task force. Is in 2017, the state scaled back a lot of those in-state programs, i.e. the Terry Center. And other placements within the state. To the point now where a lot of those placements were students who may have a higher level of service outside of the state of Delaware.
Oh, yikes.
Can, can that suddenly be broken down into different departments, district?
It's, it's a perfect segue to the next slide. But, but just real quick, I want to point out that I mentioned earlier, but the second largest expenditure category is those charter schools. It's $15.7 million a year goes outside of Red Clay to whatever schools those charter students, you know, those students choose to go to. That means we're not having to educate those students either, so conceivably if they were in Red Clay, our teaching cost would go up because we'd have more teachers and stuff.
But if we're a net importer, we, we get more money than.
That's for choice, this is charter.
That's just charter.
Charter only goes in one direction.
Yeah, that doesn't include choice.
Right.
Okay, that's just charter.
And do you know what percentage is Red Clay charter?
I don't have that.
I think that should be, I, I think.
It's a large, it's a large percent, I mean, the largest.
Do you think it's over 50%?
I, I don't want to give you a number off the top of my head because it'll be wrong.
I think that would be interesting, because I think that, that makes a huge difference, at least for me. To know.
Charter school.
And DMA.
Delaware Military Academy.
And that I don't have an issue with, the Red Clay schools are very happy that the Red Clay schools are proud that the Red Clay schools, but I would be interested. I, I can, I can.
Distinction. Yep, I can get that too. Um, and student related services, $15.9 million within, and that's, um, student related services are a bunch of account codes put together. But psychologists that are not funded through, through, um, direct hire psychologists, occupational therapists. Uh, social workers, all of those things that we are required to provide for students with special needs. Um, that are many times outside of a, a, a direct hire teacher. Because we can't find employees that will work for the state of Delaware in those categories. Like it's very, very frequently we'll find a psychologist who says, I'm going to work in the private sector because I'm going to do the same job and get paid a lot more than. The state pays, so we have one of the contractors. So in, in answer to your question about the salary, 78%, the next question people always ask. Do you ask it because where, where does that 78% go? Is it, you know, all one particular employee and none to anyone else or not? So this next slide takes that blue chart. And this takes that entire number that is all salaries and breaks it down into categories. So 59% of it is teacher salaries.
And that means educators.
That means teachers in classrooms or teachers in a teaching contract who may not be in a classroom, but are.
Direct service students.
Yeah, but powers too.
No, pairs, and this next category is student services.
Okay.
Um, 16%, so that would include, like, like, I want to make sure it's clear that I'm making clear that 59%. Everything else is not overhead. 59% is what we think of as a traditional classroom teacher. But student services would be all of our paraprofessionals that we have. And also some psychologists, occupational therapists. Support staff.
Seventy-five percent of the 78 is going to the services.
Yes, if, if you look at those two, that Pac-Man is, it's right about that same Pac-Man, right? And then, um, 1% for technology. You know, each of the managers of these departments would tell me, oh, that's a really small number, that's why I need more money. But, but that's, that's what it is. What, what's not completely clear is this is salaries. And in a lot of these departments, we might have contractors because again, it goes back to we don't have a hundred percent locally funded units. State doesn't provide technology units, like you can use a parry unit, there's, there's some ways to do it for a small number of people. But, uh, most districts will tell you that some of their technicians are outsourced, they're, they're contractors. Same with bus drivers, transportation says, shows 4%, but that's not counting any of our bus drivers that work for Sutton or any of our other contracted, um, companies.
And admin, is that APs, is that principals and APs too?
Ad, admin would include all principals, assistant principals and also central office people, Drell, myself.
Would a student advisor be, what would they be?
Student advisors are teachers.
They're teachers.
They're either in a teaching contract.
Teachers as well.
Yes, S E C, we've been calling them S E Cs, um, special education coordinators.
Oh, S E C.
S E Cs.
Try and change, just when you learn the language, try and change it on you. But on those, those will be, be teachers. Just when you learn the language, try and change it on you. But on those, those will be be teachers.
So forty percent with the transportation, you're saying it's or red clay buses, but even on outsourced.
That would be out. So this is, oh, I did it. If you can go back, as I took that one piece of the pile, now the other direction. Or hit the P key. Now the other direction. One more. That's seventy eight percent.
Yes.
I took out all those other colors. And just that seventy eight percent on the next slide is split out by by category of employee.
Okay.
So now Marie, if you can go to the next slide, there we go.
So four percent is transportation cost of the seven.
So if we have a bus driver or also we have paraprofessionals on our buses. Um if we have students with special needs that need an extra, you know, if you think about, one of the challenges with driving a bus is you're focused on driving the bus.
Bus.
And you've got up to fifty students behind you and. On the bus, that would be in that category. Um facilities, obviously, is primarily our custodians. Um secretaries, the state has changed the terminology. We're not calling them administrative assistants, but. I use secretary because that's historically what you have seen for that category. If you were to dig out an old budget report, uh I I kept it there. Yep, the same nutrition is three percent. Um and and the thing to keep in mind about nutrition is most nutrition employees are part-time employees because it's not a full day. And they're also usually, all of them are ten percent rather than ten month employees rather than twelve month employees, with the exception of a a few um specialists. So that's that's an answer to your question. And I'm sure you'll have questions about these that come up. Feel free to email me or at the next board meeting.
When when we do the salary breakdown, does that also include the benefit costs in there or is that just salary?
No, that is just salary. And I have a note on here that it does not include benefits, OECs, termination payout, etc.
Got it.
Um and and I didn't include that because the most part, OECs is a percentage, so it would be the same for for every category. Um termination payout is a little bit different because that termination payout is if someone leaves with a vacation on the books, we have to pay them out for that vacation. Teachers don't typically get vacation days. They have sick leave that they the state handles that payment, but there is um some payout for that. And then benefits is is a significant um, the the cost of benefits for an employee. Can be as high as about twenty five thousand dollars a year, depending on their coverage. And the state, that's another reason we don't want locally funded positions, is if some part of that employee is funded by the state, state pays for the benefits. If the state doesn't pay for any of that employee's salary, we pay for the benefits. So not only is the salary hundred percent on red clay. But those benefits, which could be as much as twenty five thousand dollars if someone choose, you know, we have a number of different options and then you can have family coverage. So at the top, it's about twenty five thousand.
And then when you look at a year, like the past year where you saw healthcare costs increased by twenty seven percent. That that's a huge, huge local expense.
Prescription cost, someone told me the other day, the state prescription costs have gone up twenty seven percent this year.
So.
So far.
That's for every.
And so for the contractors, they're not included.
Right, contractors are not included.
Okay, they're not included, but are they included but above they are?
They would be, if you go back to that previous, I hesitate to go back to the.
I'm not telling Maria, so I can.
Um transportation, six point eight million dollars. That would include buses, it would include fuel, it would include um contracted.
The contract.
Salaries for contracted bus.
As well as our direct employee.
Our direct employees would be under salary costs.
Got it, okay.
Um same thing with technology.
So what percentage of our of our, I know it's not a sal, well, okay, I got it, I got it. It's we're not paying them a salary, so that's why they're not in the salary breakdown.
Right. And sometimes it's hard to know what the salary is because we aren't paying the employee. That's the whole point is we're paying a couple, a lot of Sarah's related services vendors. We pay them an amount. It's based on an hourly amount, but we don't know what they're paying, passing on. So any questions about that? I'm sure you'll come up with some. Feel free to email or bring up in the next meeting.
This is very complicated.
It is.
It's complex stuff. After the game.
It is. Now for the game. And and based on the time, we're gonna try and move this this game a little bit more quickly than than normal, than than I would have normally done, but I don't want to keep you here all night. So Kathy's already started taking.
No, I didn't.
Before we, okay. Um Marie, if you can move to the next uh next slide. For a minute, we're gonna take off our red clay board member hat. You're gonna be a different board member from the blue soil consolidated. Um you get the pun there, blue soil.
I thought it was an, it was, it was a.
But you are temporarily part of the blue soil consolidated school district. And then Marie, if you can move on to the next slide, and the blue soil consolidated school district has three priorities. I won't read them on that. You'll get to look at it in a minute. And and you'll see there there are nothing earth chattering. There are things that you would expect a school district to do. And if we move on to the next slide, here's some demographics of this district. Fifty schools, nineteen hundred and five teachers, thirty thousand students. We have fourteen thousand students. So just as a gauge, this district's about twice the size. Of of red clay. Twenty percent in office teachers, fifteen percent of our stu- the students, our meaning blue, blue soil.
They don't have many teachers for the number of students.
Pardon me?
They don't have many teachers for the number of students.
They do not. They have very high class size in this district.
Okay.
Delaware, I'll speak directly, has amazingly small class sizes. If you compare it to other districts around the country. Our class, even when our class sizes seem large, there are districts that that would would say that's nothing. We have much, much larger. Obviously, it's it's not a good thing. It's great.
Consider a large classroom.
It would depend on the classroom, but we have a lot of elementary schools, elementary classrooms that are under fifteen. And there are districts, Philadelphia Public Schools, they would have twenty five to thirty in elementary school classrooms.
Especially in the upper grades, anywhere to get.
Yeah, I know, high school has over thirty eleven.
It's also depending on scheduling too.
Right. So so then there's some other stats there. So now if we can move on to the next. So the goal that you're gonna and you're gonna work with the partner, uh it looks like Jose, you can work with Durrell if you don't mind. It's good. And then um Martin and Kathy. Before you get started, your job is to go through some initiatives and decide which ones you think might be good based on those priorities. There's a page. On your checklist upside down, that's just those demographic pieces of that school district. It turns out I would give you a a sense. So you're gonna be going through this this pile of of cards.
And Mark, you're more than welcome. There's this extra set if you want to come to the table.
You're welcome. Join or join one of these groups if you want. All right, so before before we start looking at the cards, I'm gonna tell you there's a catch.
Of course.
There's a catch for our game. Or if you can go to the next slide.
Of course.
You are limited budget growth of point two five percent. You have a cranky CFO who has said. That budget cannot grow more than point two five percent. So as you look at these cards, you're gonna see things. There's percentages. I didn't make up these percentages. This is based on a company that does work with.
What's the, what's the number now? Okay.
We don't need to worry about the number now. All we need to worry about is percentage.
How do I hit the percentage when I don't?
But that's the point. The point is when we want to add something new for, you gotta take into account what adding is gonna cost us, not what the exact.
Bear with me, I'm gonna do an example.
Twenty five percent of what?
Hold on, let's explain.
I mean, point two five percent of what?
So with the partner, you're gonna review your cards and you have to keep in mind point two five percent budget growth. So let's say you look at a card, well, I'll show you an example. Now, you may get lucky. You may get lucky. I have some cards here you're gonna get to pick. You might get a grant that might be really helpful. Or you might have an unfunded legislative mandate. That happens from time to time. General Assembly decides that we have to do something. They don't fund it. We have to figure out how to work that in the budget. So we'll do this first one. This is not a real one, but a first sample. Marie, if you can go to the next slide. Budget, hold on. This is an example of an idea. Now we're not judging any ideas. This is an idea. To encourage community members to run for school board, we could provide a fifty thousand dollar honorarium for anyone that serves the board. So in this example, in this example, you're limited to point two five percent budget growth. What this card shows you is point one, two percent of your budget, and that's why it doesn't matter what the budget is because we're only talking about percentages. So if you were to adopt this, and I'm not suggesting you adopt this. You can't by law adopt this in Delaware, but if you were to adopt this, it would add point one, two percent to your budget. And I've told, right, I've told you point two five. So if you look, if you chose that, you've already spent half of your increase for next year. On board members and that percentage is is actual, it's a real number. It's a rough estimate of board members times that number fifty thousand dollars. Divided by our total budget, it would be.
Yeah, so then, so what you're saying is the point two five percent is a hundred grand.
In, well, our total is three sixty five and and my my next. Fifty is, yes, point, yes, in our case, in a larger district.
Right.
So we're we're in blue soil right now, Ken.
Percentages are accurate and they were benchmarked by doing this work at this game with lots and lots of districts. And doing these things would cost about that much. So with that, you can go through your slides. Cards and just let's take five minutes to just decide and don't overthink it.
Can we just, can we just go out to rest?
You cannot go to a restaurant, but there are some cost-saving measures in here, so that's what you can look at. So with your group, five minutes. Decide what you want to implement.
Okay, let's just hold them. Create a bi-weekly forty five minute collaboration opportunity.
Right, and you only have five, so you're already over. You'd have to find something to break down.
Trying to reduce that by point five percent, but.
That's a good one too. We're saving money.
My question is this, how was that gonna impact?
For one year.
Right, right, right.
Point seven percent.
Right. And the question is.
All right, you want to keep that one. We got a grant award. Oh, wait. Grant awards to provide funding. We just turned a one and a half percent due.
Let's keep these separate here.
Due.
Now we're doing this.
So instead of, yeah. Oh, hi. So if our goal would be to get to this, this would be awesome. Um offer four weeks of high quality summer learning to twenty five percent of the school districts. This is high quality. This is quality stuff right here. This is quality. But 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 we have to make sure we can afford it first, so.
Well, we can right now. Oh, no, we can't.
See, let's continue.
Point one five. We need to find some money.
I'm doing great.
I mean.
It's also, we do spend a lot.
All right, we reduce supervisor supervisor support.
So you've added a track to right.
But we still have more.
If you chose to implement that, you would subtract point two, or you would add point two, right? Then you'd then you'd be to the good.
So we need to find some.
Replace raises for ten percent of the most ineffective teachers with professional learning. So replace. Ten percent of your your teachers who are. I don't know what that means.
This one's.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah. Which couldn't do anyhow because of the union, so that's out.
Okay. I'm gonna look at all the greens and see which, what are these greens we want to try, okay? You have any greens over there? Okay, these are ways to bring it down.
That's hard to put as. Because again, like, how do you look at it?
Doesn't based on this, it would say, okay, if every second, if every school has a second.
So there there's.
Position like that to get in and coach principals for, rather than just.
So you know those kids would be there because they might be there. So I would consider this, if it's an elective.
That's one of our things.
You wouldn't do the summer camp?
Let's take about thirty seconds.
We got mine. No, there are.
I was gonna say, two and a half, do you want to replace? And that's only, but it's only twenty five weeks. So much more.
Additional.
Additional counseling.
Eight is thirty five, right?
We got two more.
Yeah, right now we're.
Okay, let's try and wrap it up.
It's one point nine. Well, I would want to start.
You're good, right?
That'll do it. That'll be.
So we we have a group that has uh met their two and a half and put some new initiatives together. Oh, wait a minute, maybe not. We'll see how it goes.
I mean, that grant.
We're gonna reduce the class size. I mean, we're doing that for a year. We're only doing that.
For only a year.
One new pathway. The highest.
We're getting rid of the teacher.
Reduce the average.
Thirty three and this is.
Generally, everything is above the. Generally, everything is above the. We gotta look at.
Point two five.
Point two five.
So, I mean.
We don't want to reduce.
You're talking tiny, tiny school.
Just said that that was point two. Higher counselor at each middle.
So you really can't reduce funding per minute is what you're saying. You can't really, because they're right. No, no, no. Now reduce the teachers. It's, we're just. Yeah, yeah.
Actually, we got.
So. Point three still. Yeah, that, that's.
Point five, but that can.
These are all. Now. These are the ones we're not. These are ones.
So these are all money eaters. Thirty-two. Yeah, we're already above.
Three point two, three point three, three point two.
This is a point four right here. Yeah, they.
No, but we're.
Oh, we're, we're up. Okay. Supporting thirteen principals.
And three point two, that would be point four.
All right.
You want to do that one or do you want to do a different? This is the least expensive. This is what you guys have to do.
You guys have.
Better cards?
We all have the same. Now, you all have the same cards. Martin said, I couldn't keep you here all night. So we'll just.
Okay.
We'll, we'll put it into where we are right now. How many people were able? How many people were able to choose some good initiatives that sound like they're going to really help kids? And you stayed within your point two five percent budget. Everyone. Okay, great. How many people had a grant award that helped them get there?
We did.
What happens next year in that?
And that's what we were discussing. So that, that's a challenge always. And, and this has been an issue, I would say, for school districts since Race to the Top, right? Which created these competitive grants to address instruction and needs of students, but it put people into grants.
Like the W L C?
And grants have a lifespan, right? And so that life cycle of that grant eventually ends. And then emerging as an example, right? So when you, so then it's like, well, that grant runs out. Now you're looking at local expenses to continue that program. And not only are those local expenses looking to continue that program, but it's not only the salary, but it's also the OECs. So you're actually looking at a compounding factor a lot of times when you, on, on a local expense. So I think the challenge in the of, of this exercise is there's always a lot to say. And then I guess the bigger question.
Unfunded legislative mandate.
We did.
Would that mean you had to take away something that you thought was an important piece to you? That happens all the time.
A lot. Right. So each time, especially when you have a very. When you have a very active. Who puts things in place.
I think we did good.
You then need sort of like counseling supports, like.
Well, just apply for the grant.
Well.
It may not be there.
Money's gone, the money's gone. Vic's exactly right. You'd have to do that again.
Right.
But you have people who are went into those programs. And the next year, right? How many of you looked at a cost-saving measure that, oh, this is great. We'll save money. And then you pictured calls or emails you were going to get from somebody.
Not only that, so one of these.
Cut the teachers, the bad teachers, pay by ten percent of the bad teachers.
Or reduce the supervisory support.
Yeah.
And then realizing that if there's no one there to kind of provide them with that support, then who picks it up?
Right.
Teachers do. And absolutely.
Wow.
So I, I think.
I want better cards.
This group over here, you all have the. There's actually more, but this was the, the shorter version. If you have too many off, I mean, you could spend, you could turn it into a full day workshop.
Yeah, you could.
My point in all this is one way to do budgeting is for me to say, Darrell to say after he and I talked, okay, everyone's got a one percent increase in their budget next year. And then you've got a bunch of different silos and everyone's got one percent to do what they think might be good. The more complicated process, but the better result, I think in the end, is going through exercises like this. Not that we would consider all, I don't want anyone to misquote, you know, think I'm saying we should do any of these things. These were just things that districts around the country have done. They all seem like awesome ideas at first, if the number is green, right? If it's saving. But then, like I.
Unanticipated consequence.
Right. There was a, the group over here was like, oh, we can save some money by getting rid of a clerk. Because it doesn't affect teachers. We don't want to affect teachers. That's great. But what happens when parents can't get a hold of the school because the clerk is.
All the kids have cell phones anyway, so.
They're away. But, but, and, and again, based on time, I wanted to shorten this, but the, the point of this is, this is what a school district goes through to get you a budget in um, July. And then a final budget in January is going through. And obviously, instead of the blue soil district priorities, we have our strategic plan. That's a, a, an advantage of a strategic plan is it frames all these discussions. Some of these might be really, really good ideas, but I think I heard Jose say, that's not one of our priorities. And that's something as a district, we, any district has to do all the time. None of these are bad ideas. I mean, I, I think back to how many board meetings I've been to, I've been here thirty-some odd years. I don't think I've ever heard a bad idea at public comment. Philosophically, you might disagree with some, but none of them are bad ideas, but you can't do them all. Or not, you, I don't mean the board, but a district can't do them all, especially when budget, point two five percent budget growth is not unreasonable. Our assessed value increases point two five percent a year. Usually, last year, we lost a million dollars in addition to that, you know, under that. So this was just an example of, to kind of think through a way to do budgeting. Certainly more time intensive than just, I mean, you can take Excel, do a spreadsheet and tell everyone you got an extra point two five percent to grow, right? And Martin will be excited because he can do more stuff.
Then they're not addressing the.
Exactly. So as a district, we need to be able to say, gee, Mark, that's a great idea, but it's not aligned as much with the strategic plan as Vic's idea. So we're going to have to pick picks up. Like I want with the board members idea, Mark, instead of. But that's, that's the process that gets us to all those numbers that I shared earlier.
The point two five doesn't typically even count for the T D, the, the employee raises.
Doesn't account for inflation.
Right.
Right? We've been seeing three percent plus.
In terms of inflationary factor, right?
And I've had principals say that it costs paper. It's gone up. It, it has. So you want us to cut down on the number of teachers to buy more paper, like everything, it, it's a zero sum game.
And going back to even like the, the choice and charter payment and looking at inflationary factors, right? Because the state decided that there was going to be an additional pay rates for educators, which again, we all can agree on. But there's also a local expense to that. And so that local expense gets shifted in when there was an inflationary factor for districts that was actually eight percent. When in the governor's recommended budget, it was only two percent.
What?
So there, there are a lot of give and takes as it relates to really trying to provide the board a balanced budget when we know, again, seventy-eight percent of that budget are people. Um, and when we look at programs, so our ultimate goal and objective has been to really look at alignment of resources, sports, through our strategic plan, but using that in a data-driven decision-making, a, a way to really look at how we're maximizing every dollar, every cent that we receive from the community. And again, this was just a, a, an example of, it, it, it's not necessarily a, a, a one for one or an easy process as we look at the more diverse student population, the larger geography in terms of what those needs are, there will always be competing priorities within the district. But our goal is to look at how the sum of, of, of those parts equal the whole. And there's only one way or a certain way that you can slice that pie. Can't get blood out of a tourniquet, right? And so that, that, that idea of we're trying to be mindful of of the resources that we get and being strategic in terms of how we leverage those resources to get the maximum outcomes. Because when, in looking at blue soil, seventy-five percent of the students are free, are students receive free or in a reduced lunch. But proficiency is how we're measured. I think in this current time and the season, people looking at funding and they're looking at outcomes.
They are, they, they are.
And how we as a district continue to be mindful of meeting the everyday needs of students, children and families that get put on public school by also aligning to those priorities and, and, and meeting those learning needs. So hopefully you found this session valuable. Again, this was a, go ahead.
Can I ask a question, Darrell? So when people do tie the money to the outcomes, and they always say that Delaware is number, you know, one of the top five in the country for the amount it spends on students and look at the outcome. I don't know if that first thing is true. You know, our per pupil spending, when you look on the DOE website, is like in the twelve, thirteen thousand dollar range per student, right?
And we're in the top, I would say, the last graph I saw about definitely in the top third of the country. Expenses.
But they say, look at that and look at the outcome. What do you say to that?
Well, it's, 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 it's hard to debate it because you, you can't get into this nuanced conversation for folks that really generally understand, one, the, the, the various streams of funding that, that, that comes into funding. And when you look at it locally, I mean, I would just also say, again, look at the number of choice and or charters that impact
Very.
what we do on a day-to-day basis, right? And so again, we're in that window right now where and if you look at our title funding and, and, and geographically, the number of students that we support holistically, um, it, it becomes almost a, a mute point to try to argue against it. Um, I think sometimes you have to demonstrate all that you do do. But that requires you to engage with folks to sit down for people to actually get down to see and hear the nuance of what we have to do. So if you take three K argument, a lot of people generally would be like, don't understand that. But they also don't understand that we have a Newcastle County memorandum of, of, of agreement or understanding with Newcastle County school districts where geography-based the majority of the early learning centers fall within our geographic boundaries. A lot of those students transition into red clay through an agreement. And so then that becomes a higher level of support and need that we have as a local school district without them really understanding that there's a broader reach that we're actually supporting the county as a whole. So again, I think it's, it's, it's a nuanced argument. It sounds good for a thirty-second political ad and or candidate. You know, but again, it's, it's coming upon us to do our due diligence to be out and about and engage with the community so they, they do truly have an understanding. Um, again, spent the, the Saturday with the Delaware PTA and really helping and, and parents actually who are engaged and, and they, and they see that. And if, I don't know which cards it had, but it was you know, adding extracurricular, co-curricular sports. I mean, look no further than you drive our district. There are a lot of students who are engaged in co-curricular, extracurricular activities. That's a local expense.
That was one of those that made the top category there of student travel and athletics.
You, you take that away, that, that's, that's not a well-balanced school experience. And so again, I think, you know, tho- those conversations become very difficult to have because you're not sitting down and having the, the nuanced kind of discussions to really get down into the the nature of what actually how schools are funded, but more importantly, what, where those funds are going.
Even I think when you have the conversation about our biggest expenditure is just people and paying people. Right? We live in a very expensive, you know, part of the country. I mean, the metropolitan area of Philadelphia is not cheap. Um, and that's where we reside and certainly Kent, the cost of living in Kent is nowhere near compared to what it is in northern Newcastle County, Newcastle County. Um, we're not Texas, you know, I mean, it's, it's a it's a costly area to live in comparative to, um, other parts of the country. So I think that's a.
And we're state-funded system. Again, sometimes when we compare ourselves to neighboring states and they're, they're, they're more of a county-driven. So there's a whole host of things that I think.
Yeah, they're funded differently.
So I had a lot of numbers, a lot of questions, a lot of answers. I'm sure you'll think of stuff after I leave here. Um, tomorrow, when you're online to vote, you'll be thinking things by all means, just send me an email or give me a call or bring it up at the next board meeting. Or come to the CFRC meeting. We meet every month and Kathy can vouch, we talk in much greater detail than we're ever able to do at a board meeting about these things. Um, tomorrow we're meeting and we're talking about, um, Carol Beck can come and talk about ML and opportunity funds. And, and again, no bad ideas. You just can't do them all. Um, December, Kelly's coming to talk about transportation. She heard a lot about transportation, doorside stops and all that stuff. It's all a great idea, but ultimately all of it has a cost.
But a lot of times too, and, and we can't address it from the podium, and I know you can't either, but a lot of times the public is just missing. Speaking about the doorside busing and brandy wine, they don't do doorside busing.
But, but it's all our jobs as a district to educate people because they don't know.
But it, it's hard to do it from in a school board meeting.
It is. And that's where we encourage people to come to CFRC. We've had last couple of months, an increase by like hundreds of percent in the number of committee members that attend. And that's great because and, and they told me, even if, if they disagree with something, they've said, I, I didn't know this before. And so it takes time. People are busy. A lot of assume. They, they do a lot of assume. You sort of break that stuff down to them, then they have a different outlook. You know what I mean?
Well, and again, I, I think in fairness to, to parents in the community, I mean, there, there are people who are literally within the system and legislators and folks who are passing, who don't even understand.
Right. It's com- it's a very, very, very complicated system and it, our budgeting is incredibly complex.
And, you know, in northern Newcastle County with Delaware, you know, in terms of proximity, you see what we pay out in terms of charter payments. You know, and again, disaggregating that to see what our charters are, but there, there's.
It doesn't matter. It's still a charter.
It, it's, it's a lot. And I'm just, I'm just giving that as an example where the general public wouldn't necessarily see it as such, or, you know, have the, the, the level of understanding because again, folks who are passing laws and oftentimes have it, the.
Well, and, and people, I think a lot of times people make the best decision and there's just unintended consequences of every decision, right? Because we can't foresee the future.
All right. Well, thank you. And again, as Dr. Ammon indicated, if there's specific questions that you have following, please don't hesitate to reach out. Now seven.
Seven forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You too.
Game, I like it.
Yeah.
You're welcome to come any day between March and June when we're.